I don't know. Um, what's his face? Jerry says he figured it out.
Oh.
And it was just for, it was for me. It was for cremation, so it's a lot smaller.
That term.
Yeah.
They need somebody to run with a skim loader and drill a hole. They're real full. Oh, uh. The way you're getting buried out in the John Rowe Township Cemetery. Not buried, you're cremated.
Cremated and the vault. Well, there'll be a vault, too.
So cemetery not used?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's used.
It's a county cemetery. Letha was very pleasant, actually. We actually got to chat a little tiny bit. And, uh, cause she's the one that called me about it. And I said, well, do you have a phone number? Oh, yeah. You know, like she was gonna just, you know, start researching it or something like I was gonna find these people.
The home, but.
Well, somebody, the trustees or whoever managed the cemetery usually go out, measure, determine.
Well, they usually assign, they're usually somebody that does it for them. Cause the trustees don't typically wanna do it either. At least in this case, they don't for sure.
So.
Weeds don't, cause that would be weeds.
Right.
But anyway, that's what they have expressed.
It's not that.
That they would be done if they had to go out.
Measure that out.
Mark out cemetery plots and so.
I mean, that's probably like one a year that they probably have to be.
So far, that's all I've had.
I could handle that if I knew where the, where the starting point was.
Right. Exactly.
Call her daughter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Does everybody have a chance to review the agenda? Is there any, is there, I guess I'm looking for approval of the agenda?
I'll make most approve the agenda.
Mr. Hayden?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mulbauer. All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes up. Uh, Madam Auditor, would you please read us the last meeting minutes?
Yes. It's okay. Um, August eighth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosford, Chairman presiding, members present. Where Schultz, Dozark, Rosberg, Mulbauer, Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approves the change of wage for Martha Civil. Assistant County Attorney, Attorney's Office. Tim Stewart gave the board an update on the Wellness Center progress and a request for ARPA funds. The Wellness Center is striving to reach seventy percent funded goal and will be applying for grants. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark. To approve a commitment of an additional two hundred and fifty thousand from ARPA funds. An amended motion from Hayden, seconded by Dozark, to approve a commitment of a hundred thousand now and fifty thousand for three years following. Amended motion passed unanimously. Original motion also passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one. Resolution to pay back inter-fund temporary operating loan. It was in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Voting aye, Schultz, Dozark, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden, motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozark, to approve a liquor license for top of Iowa Lucky White. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark, to approve the tax abatement of eleven ninety-one, Highway thirty-seven. Um, Dunlap, Tara, and Jeremy Christensen, a new dwelling. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the county farm lease termination. Motion passed unanimously. The board had a discussion with Summit Pipeline, North Dakota Ruling. Um, Riley from Summit. Carbon Solutions answered questions addressed during the discussion. On motion, do we second the board adjourned eleven thirty-one AM? Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
I just have one that I don't know.
Right.
If, uh, on a shit say, on the amended through that part. If the motion, original motion, the amended motion passed, and then it says, original motion passed.
No, I didn't know how it should go.
Original motion as amended.
Original motion as amended passed.
Yeah.
Oh, so, so it's okay to say that the amended motion passed, but then say, original motion as amended.
Exactly. As amended.
Yep, because I read it yesterday at the time that I wasn't. I was thinking, if I could have as amended, because the way that kind of reads is me, a pass, pass the amendment, now we went back and voted on the original motion.
That was confusing.
You just need to have like four years of parliamentary procedure with that ballman or.
I think that'll.
Ty has a vote.
I will tell you that I, I still kind of, and I'm gonna do it at our annual, our conference down there. Try to get them to have that guy come from the, down to the supervisors meeting. And he was really, really, and it was nice English, so it was easy to understand what he was talking about. Just went so darn fast, cause he was pressed for time. Couldn't take all the notes I'd allowed, like to.
Well, that's right. Say that everything else is fine.
Thanks for bringing that up. We'll wait for her to get back before we.
Here's the drawl today.
A lot here.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I don't know. They're supposed to do it Saturday, but they're gonna show up Saturday, whatever they're doing.
Oh, Horizon?
Yeah.
Horizon, okay.
You want to take some pictures?
Oh, yeah. Walked up and heard this clank, clang, clang, and. Better sound.
Okay, uh, is there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Are they printing them up for us again?
I would, I would make the motion to approve them as.
As noted.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Dozark. Any further discussion here? None? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Here is amended, amended minutes or be a. Okay, uh, supervisory report. Before we get started, I'm gonna case it round a little bit, and I gotta get sure. There's two things. Everybody noticed that the, uh, looked like we gained a little bit back on our insurance. You know, we're, we started, I, uh. This is Martin posted, brought your, printed up for me. Last July, we started at, uh. They're just right at work, one point four million, thirteen ninety-nine. Anyway, we worked down and we actually got down like one zero eight zero. We got a little bit nervous there. Now, we climbed back and.
One minute and eighteen.
Yeah.
One minute and one hundred and eighty thousand.
So climbed up a little bit again, and I would assume.
What did it do from year to year?
Uh, this is, this is last year's running.
We, for, well. For a while there, we were like just about broke. When I about got on the board, we were down to like three hundred thousand, and then that self-insurance fund. So we re-aligned some things and, and we were actually sitting at two million for quite a while. As a, and this all fluctuates on the health of people.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's a moving target, always a moving target. So that's when we stated the. Insurance holiday, the employees weren't paying anything over as much, right?
Yeah, not as much. We have not paid zero for a long time.
Okay, I didn't know if the singles were.
Oh, I don't remember about the singles. Anyway.
I got it down to about a million five and we thought, you know, that's where we wanted to stay. That's a comfortable level. So, and last year it just kind of kept trickle down, 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 because our claims, obviously, were falling down. So we're trying to see now if it'll back, and we need to have more input from our employees, right?
Yeah, we gotta, I think it's important we keep a, a reasonable cushion. You know, I mean, that one point five was like, we kind of thought would look good, so. That's what we'll keep an eye on. I just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of paying attention to that.
In a way, those numbers are things we have no control over, because if you get someone who's battling with a, you know, pills that are nineteen thousand dollars a piece or cut in real fast.
Right, but you changed some of your prescription policy, my share.
I think that'll help.
That might help.
Hopefully that helps.
Some of that stuff we did here.
Yeah, I think that'll help a lot.
And we have adjusted that stop loss premium over, or not premium, but the cap, the, where the stop loss carrier starts paying claims. It's gone from thirty-five to forty. I can't remember how many years ago that was.
Oh.
Six or eight.
Remember when we did that?
Can't remember.
So it's been the last.
Been a long time.
Probably.
Yeah.
So, yeah, keep an eye on that number. It just.
Okay.
Keeps working its way back up.
Yeah, hopefully it will work its way back up. We'll see. Okay, the other thing is, uh, this next, next link. Uh, all these broadband providers, I, I mean, the more that we can get, the marrier, especially if they can offer competition in the area. They have sent this, I think everybody had a chance to read it. This is the difference in Terry printed up for me. But where they're adding, they wanna add into Crawford County, and all I just wanted to consensus that you guys think I should sign this letter of support, and then it's gotta be in by the twenty-fifth. We can take a bullet on it. But, uh. It's basically, I was looking through it and kind of read it, and Googled some of these things to make sure they're facts for factual, and, and it is factual. So, the only question. Yeah, must be, hopefully they didn't post it, right? The, uh, uh. Only question I got from them is I don't, I wanna make sure, because they're gonna, they're, they're wanting to get one of these grants for the broadband. And, and that's great, but then I don't wanna, I, I'm really, if they're getting money to get in here. I don't wanna have any, I don't wanna make sure they don't want some kind of an exclusivity contract where these zones are ours and ours alone, you know what I mean?
Right. Yeah, we did this very similar thing with, um.
When?
Yeah.
Was it? I couldn't find a letter.
The ones that are in Carroll now, they got the nice thing about Walmart.
We did that with them, and, you know, the people want them, and I think it, it might as well.
But they're not asking to be in our right of way or use our poles like the.
No, I don't.
I don't think so.
No. Are, are they prominent in other areas, or I guess I haven't?
Yeah, actually, yeah, actually, the, uh. Oh, they're, they're in Cedar, Delaware, Dubuque, Jones, and all the counties over east, so it's kind of nice that somebody's wanting to be over here in the western side of the world. But Western Crawford, they, they're only really wanting to be in Eastern Crawford, too. But, uh, no, they actually got a, a spot marked off where we encompass Leswick as well, so that's, I guess that qualifies as Western Crawford. But, uh. I don't know, I, I thought we could support it as long as they don't want some kind of exclusivity in their zones. I, I'm not, I'm not for that. So if you guys are all right, I'll, I'll sign a paper for them and.
I agree.
Get them, get them involved in our, our county.
Business needed, make it sort of better.
Always does, but at least it should. Okay, that was all I had. Uh, Dave, you want to start today?
Sure, um. I had last week was Region Twelve, um, meeting. Executive Board, we went over our expenses, like in the handles around. Three tipple, nothing really. Doubt, there was one on there I marked out. Um, we will no longer be doing Iowa workforce development because that's changed, but, uh, different page. Uh, first Iowa homes, Home for Iowa, the very first one, that is the last payment on that. A home, so I had to be working there, Home for Iowa, was getting out into the communities and getting people in, uh, quality, good homes. I had here, the executive director report. Well, he will be coming later on today for the updates on the disaster involving loan fund and some of our options that I. Talked to you guys, let you know last week on. I won't get into that too much, because we're gonna be here.
Okay.
Um, the fiftieth anniversary is coming up September seventh in Templeton. If you're interested, you're willing to meet our RSVP.
Okay, I got an email for that yesterday.
I got that last name. We have an onboard meeting for that. And then having our.
Is gone.
Um, we did our, I, our meet for your loan fund. We ended up amending the contract terms of that. Uh, we got updated on and it kind of went back to West Liberty. Wanting, originally said no to the amendment because West Liberty was looking at wanting to have a slicing facility in Illinois. We did end up changing that amendment because of. Oh, we got more into how the West Liberty co-op works. It is operator owned, so the producers in Iowa are ownership, have ownership, skinning the game with the company, so they are rooted here, so it's not like they're gonna.
So it's a little co-op-ish?
Yeah, it is a co-op.
Okay.
And. We said, well, that, that changes things a bit, because they are gonna just pack up and move to Illinois. But yet, if they can't be competitive and keep going, it could hurt them too, or they, you know, we lose growers that way, too. He said, as long as it's a co-op signed system, that the owners of the production still stays within Iowa, then we can get behind that. To try to help them be competitive, but we haven't got any, um.
What, what are they requesting?
We haven't got that yet. We just know that that's coming down the pipe, that they're, they're getting their ducks in a row, turkeys in a row. For a.
So they don't have a processing facility that they're.
They do, they wanna, they have something in Illinois that they wanna streamline it so that it is more hands-off, more, um. Machine-operated, some longevity of, of slicing, it puts it all together. You're talking about where you have less people handling it, so it actually lasts longer. Cause I, I guess just contact the people.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so it, hopefully it's something that actually, if, if it works out well, may increase the need of production or growers, which would increase growers in Iowa. And being that they're all, you know, operator-owned, could be the same. Uh. But here's the executive report, and, um. Well, we did just change, uh, Paul Plum, the new CDC Director. He replaced Mariah on the Regional Council for Region Twelve.
Yeah.
So he's filling in that, that slot. Um. Iowa Workforce Development. We had, they, um. Were hiring the, all the cogs to do some of the work, um, some of the budgeting things. They, they had to have an inspector to go around and inspect, make sure they're, everybody was in compliance. There, we're no longer going to perform that duty for Iowa Workforce Development, because the state took it over. However, they have nobody at the state to do it. So.
Right.
Chocking.
But yet it is, but yet it is required.
Chocking.
Um, by the federal government, then somebody has to do it, so it, in their, ball is in their court, so. The wheels on that must be falling off. And then we had our transit report, ride you down a little bit, which is very typical of this time of year. Get into fall, Christmas time, busier, summertime, people are gone.
Yeah.
But, uh, there was that report, otherwise, um, Rachel will be in here a little bit later. Kind of give us our update on some of our options with that disaster involving loan fund, since Carroll and Crupper do not qualify. But he has some ideas to make it equal out, to be fair for the region, even though we put in matching funds. He'll walk us through that.
How much do we put if you can talk about that?
Twenty-five thousand, right?
There's some options, like it, once that gets de-federalized, then we can, then we can use those funds or something. But, oh, he'll get into the details on that.
We'll wait and ask him the questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I got for you.
All right, sir.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I'll get a paper now. I did, yeah, send you guys the Kristy Harshberger.
Where do you do that?
Yep.
Are the opioid, the interest rate, the interest, it goes into the opioid fund currently?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I got?
Mr. Dozark, are you ready?
Uh, sure. Had a Wesco meeting last night. Uh. Wesco Community Action tonight. Uh, Wesco, uh, they have their, every three years, they have what's called a CARF, uh, survey. And it's kind of a federal survey that gets done every three years. Uh, was completed first week of August. Um, they had no findings, zero recommendations, which is the first time I think that ever happened for them. And so, um, Deidra Brown is the person that kind of runs and prepares them for this survey. And so, um, certainly Clay said she deserves a lot of the credit for them to attain this mark that they've never attained before. Um. So, the, one of the comments, I guess they got back from the surveyors, they said Wesco is a great facility. It's run correctly, and they tend to find solutions for the problems that their members have. Um. They did, um, moving forward, I guess from a housing perspective. Um, here in town, Ike Kinkle owns nine of the fourteen houses that they have here in Dennison. Uh, Ike's eight years old, and he came to Wesco and said that, hey, over the next eight, nine years, I'd like to sell one house a year. Just to get my estate clear of the home, so my kids don't have to deal with this, like something would happen to me. And so, the first one came up for sale, or the first one, um, Wesco found. A place for the four people that were living there to live somewhere else, so Ike could sell this house. They're hoping that it does occur as Ike plans, one house a year.
Yeah.
Uh, something they can do, you know, if something would happen to Ike, um, it could be something that would be.
Accelerating.
Um, something that would make Wesco go through some things that they're not planning to. Because they, I think I mentioned before that their five-year plan was to build fifteen homes to replace these homes. And what they've run into now is what we've run into with our, our P's, is trying to find a construction person that has the time to do that. And so, it's, it's with their wave program that's at the church, I think I mentioned last time, that last month that they, um, found an investor that was willing to build one for them. Um, build up a facility for them to move their wave program, they would pay that investor rent. Um, now it's, can we find a person to build it by next March when their lease is up? And so, that is an issue throughout the community, throughout, um, I mean. Throughout Western Iowa, and it's just an issue that if you're a young person and you want to get into trade, uh, certainly. There's work for you.
But is there money in it?
There is.
There is.
Need for you.
Carpentry, electricians, boy, I can name them. We need them.
And it's, well, it's getting amplified as the baby boomer generation is retiring.
Yeah, right.
I have a question. Now, at one point in time, there was a, a guy in Dennison that was buying all of Ike's homes and just letting them stay, turning, you know, because he saw the benefit in pouring those.
I mentioned that last night.
Uh-huh.
Clay just responded back that with what has happened with the housing market in Dennison. That now, um, Ike purchased these homes for probably in the fifty to seventy thousand dollar range. And his return on investment is very good.
Yep.
For what a new person would have to purchase these homes for and rent them back to what Wesco is currently paying, the return on investment is not very.
And so Ike's gonna be better off to put them out on the open market and not try to have this.
Cause that's what I thought, too, was maybe what we need to do as Wesco is just find an investor.
Right.
To purchase the home and then continue to rent it to us. Um, there's a couple of the homes that Wesco doesn't want, and this first one was one of them.
Oh, okay.
So they were willing to let this one go by.
Right.
There are some other ones that. If Wesco can get five people in a home versus four people in a home.
Right.
It helps them tremendously from a financial standpoint, is that all the overhead is basically the same. The only difference is the, is the, is the income is a lot higher.
Right.
So any home that they build moving forward will be a five-person ranch home, no basement. Um, and they really don't care where they build in the community. They would like to just make sure that it's flat. And they don't wanna have, they'd like to be equally dispersed throughout the community. They don't want, you know, like four homes in a row. They wanna be dispersed throughout the community, and, I mean, they're not opposed to, you know, Vale, Charter Oak, Yoots, Leswick. Um, you know, transportation costs are gonna be quite a bit higher to do that, but they're not opposed to looking at that. So some of those other communities, um, certainly Manillo, you know, Westside Vale. Karen Deloitte, they were doing.
Those are kind of close.
Cause steps are an issue, and there's so many of them, you know, the smaller, less expensive homes, or those raised ranch that they had to, the cookie cutters they have out. Getting places, so, yes, it's a challenge.
Um. Started their new fiscal year, July one, uh, monthly profit was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, which was, I think, a record for July. Um, last year, they had a gross income of ten point five million. Uh, let's see. Currently, they are supporting a hundred and seventy-eight total individuals served, which once again is a record for Wesco. So I think that shows a lot with, when you're serving more people than you've ever served, and you get a survey that says you're doing everything right. I think that's just kudos to the people at, at Wesco, to their employees and what, what they do.
Isn't that a great thing?
It's been a pleasure to serve on their board. It's, uh. As a lifelong community member, there's things in this community that you don't know that are successes, and Wesco is one of those successes that we have.
Really big success, actually.
Greg Thompson stopped by after the meeting on his way home.
Paul Ripdick?
Yep.
Stop by your place? He just got off as president. Bill Bruce is our new president. Uh, I was elected secretary the last night.
Excellent, all right.
But that's all I got, Ty.
Okay, sir, thank you. Mr. Schultz, do you have anything for us?
Well, that made me a little short. I was doing it driving around last week. I wanted to go down and see the subgrade stabilization project, and they were well deep into exciting, gonna drive through it. But I think I talked to Paul yesterday, and it should be done as of yesterday, so I want to check that out. They were putting a lot of Portland cement up, blending in. I mean, I was probably that deep on the road that they were coming to blend in and pulverize it. So I'm kind of excited to see how this turns out. And through them travels, then I ran into where a blade school was going on.
Did you?
Yeah, so I sat and watched them for a while, just didn't have no choice. They got the.
But, I mean, I was asked, because I, I had, uh, someone asked, I said, there was eight maintainers out there.
Yep.
On one row. What are they doing?
I said, to, uh, train.
Oh, that's cool.
And, uh, Paul happened to be out there, and he said that he was surprised how well-received it is. He actually showed me text messages, one of our operators that's saying, thanks for doing this, spent their next amount of years of fire. Somebody's showing me something.
Great.
Now we're getting, now we're.
I mean, Paul and I talked about maybe trying to do this annually.
Well.
You know, and I, I don't disagree with it.
Who was the person that was out doing the training?
Gentleman from, uh, Nebraska, him and his wife. She was running blocks. She wanted to let me through. You gotta get off the road. They're coming around the corner.
So is this all that they do?
I believe so, yeah. And I think he's a retired blade operator, and just. Must have seen the need to take his knowledge and try to pass it on, so.
Oh, you don't know what you don't know.
If each one of them grabs one thing from, it's a win.
Fun, putting them in this class altogether, you know, like, you know they're talking about in their breaks or whatever, and discussing things, so they, they might actually comprehend things that. You know, by discussing it, you actually get a better comprehension of the whole process. I know, but I think this was one of our better ideas for the secondary road system, was having this school. I can tell that.
I think it's great.
Good job finding somebody that's obviously good at it, so.
Well, the other thing is, is if you're trained by somebody who wasn't doing it exactly right, kind of, it straightens that out. it straightens that out, you know, they're all learning it at the same time, the same way and should have more uniform.
It's, it's, one of them things is hard to put a performance standard together, do you meet standards?
Correct.
You know, when there's really you know, it's not like doing arithmetic where you should always come up with the same answer regardless. Use common core, right, stuff, I mean, this one here, it's by seat and by eyes and so they all kinda get the same training, at least you can you know, have the same thought process that the end result should be this, you know. Regardless how we get to it, and then those jeans are so capable. Gene, if you ever have a member run a maintainer, you should get in and give it a try sometime.
Oh, they ran a bowl, those.
That's a start, that's a start. So gotta run across that and look, I, I was really impressed with that.
Yeah.
Uh yes center meeting Friday, so I can break those news to all these that I'd like to make it up to Land Hall.
Land Hall.
That's Friday, it's an eleven to one.
I mentioned the seat tent, who's got the seat tent?
Ike's got the seat tent, right? He bought a tent for Brian, right?
Yeah, you guys were wanting to use that, I think I got.
We asked you like two weeks ago and you said, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, I haven't got it back.
I even asked you at Van Hall this morning, I was in there, I said, Ty's gonna be here, right? I said, well, I'd be at the fair, but he's bringing the tent.
I'll get ahold of Zach and put him to work, he's out actually coming back from Oklahoma.
So.
Maybe I'll get ahold of Sandy and have her drop it off at Van Hall.
That might be nice.
If, if at all else fails, we can, Brian's the one that knows how to best put it up, so.
Yeah, they're setting up already, they were, Louise was down there yesterday, rounding their cages.
Yeah, right.
Setting up for Friday's veterans appreciation dinner.
Count on that.
Yep.
So we're supposed to be there.
There's actually two of them in there.
Yeah.
There is.
But uh.
One half.
When are we supposed to get there? Oh.
Eleven.
Ten thirty. I can't believe Jean ain't here telling us, giving us.
She's in the Ford Dodge for some other VA thing.
Okay. Unfortunately, I have yes center meeting Friday, so I will not be able to make it speak that. In regards of last week's conversation with the pipeline, any other thoughts of, of charging for crossing permits? I mean, we typically don't charge for crossing our roads. But you know, this.
Are you like talking about like with the pipeline and stuff?
Yep.
Better get that going.
Well, and I just been thinking about it and, you know, one of our conversations last week or yesterday with Paul was how we had a contractor on the east side of the county like they're putting some phone or something in and he said it's a disaster and we're gonna have to pay somebody to sit there and watch them.
Yep, I say yes, let's do it.
And really, it's not a utility, although it, you know, so. I'm just.
Everybody else is getting a little something.
That's why.
Well, we had the road down there that the manning utility tore up right on the shoulder that time.
Well, their insurance did settle.
No, I mean, they did, but I'm just saying if we had somebody monitoring that, we'd have had somebody call right away.
Are you thinking, I just have two questions, are you thinking you have a price for permits for private companies or all utilities?
I think it would, are just some private companies, you know. I mean, if it's not, don't serve a public purpose. I mean, although it can be argued that it's will help the economy of Iowa, I mean, that's argumentatively, I mean, depending on what side of the fence you're on.
I guess, I mean, I had a discussion with Tim Baumann last week concerning this exact issue. And I told him, I said, hey, I'm gonna try to see if I can find some information concerning the Dakota Access Pipeline. And when that went through, once the Iowa Utilities Board gave its approval, what, I don't wanna say what recourse or what kind of easements did the counties have to go through? You know, did they automatically have to just grant an easement and absolutely no cross to go across the roads? Because the Iowa Utilities Board gave access um to the Dakota Access Pipeline and I was I couldn't find any information, I searched and searched and searched and I couldn't find what counties were able to do um or not able to do, or if they just had to you know, kowtow to what the Highway Utilities Board said, yep, we give them approval for eminent domain, they get to go through. And counties, right, you can't do a darn thing about it, I, I couldn't find anything about it, nothing.
Would Troy grow, I mean, on, on the pipeline in particular, not other things, but since we've got him out there, I mean, could we have that in his instructions?
Oh, sure we could, sure we could.
But they still would have to, summit or navigator, whoever would, has to come every time to our engineer's office and request permit to cross.
I think they filed all the permits or.
They filed them, they requested them, but we've never.
Paul's not signed them, right?
And I get it, he feels very uncomfortable.
Right.
Giving a permission to cross if there's eminent domain being used or, and I get that.
And I'm glad.
Is there, do you have any idea of what that permit price should be?
It needs to be, I mean.
From what I've heard, it's all over the board, substantial.
I mean, are you talking?
So different counties are charging different?
Or at least they're attempting to.
Because I mean, if people are granting them easements and they're getting paid, if we as a county grant an easement, we should get paid.
There you go, but let's get that.
That's kinda where I'm thinking.
I will tell you the thing, and I can imagine Paul bringing up on this, is we're giving them a co-easement or whatever you wanna say on ours, but it's still the farmer's ground underneath there, cause we have easement on the ground. That, and Paul will bring that part up, I can notice about that.
Yeah.
So, but that's a great point, cause if we have, especially if we have to have extra surveillance, you gotta pay.
Well, after that conversation last week or yesterday, when it was with him, he said, we're just gonna have to pay somebody sit out and wa- watch these people.
Yeah.
Cause they're just.
Let's get it on the agenda.
So we need to.
Discuss it.
I don't think we need to.
Do it where we get.
Find a rate, you know, just say five hundred dollars or a thousand, whatever it is.
As we can.
Every time you cross our road. Cause we gotta pay somebody to sit there and babysit, cause it's proven in the past that we can't trust contractors to put it back the way it was when they come.
I agree.
I think we just gotta be diligent in how we write that up.
Right.
So that we don't, let's say, someone wants to put a new home in and they need to put rural water in the room. That we're not stifling that.
I would agree, that should be worded in there somehow, you know. But, cause we just, I think, was in the last week's meeting, we had an easement for Linda Hoffmeyer to put a water line underneath, you know, they dug a new well, have water here and then put a water on the ground they own underneath, then hesitant of doing it.
Right.
So how do you differentiate, makes a good point, so you're not charging.
Right, cause they're private, they're not.
They're private, exactly, same thing, right? Right.
We can think about it.
Word it, right, we think about it, exactly, there's a way you can do it.
We can word it where it's, it's not. I don't, you'd have to just throw stuff out, not beneficial to the local, but I'd say that's convoluted too.
Do you, are there counties doing it though?
I believe so, yes.
So basically with Paul's guidance.
Yep.
Attorney's language and maybe some research on behalf of what other counties might be doing.
The guys, the, the men and women at the yes center, how many of them are charged of, cause most, it's going through most of their counties as well, so.
That'd be fine, that'd be great, thank you.
It's our permission.
Excellent.
Hundred percent favor.
And then if, if the eminent domain was used to double the price. That just bugs me though.
It should bug you.
Cause if they're gonna bore under, they're gonna have to get on their property and bore under our road, so. Think about it.
Okay.
Good points.
Very good.
Right.
Uh maybe that's the only thing we have.
And make sure we care.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, okay.
Well, what's the court ruling what happened with Shelby, I mean, it kinda showed that we don't have a lot of authority. Out of our, you know, out of our wheelhouse.
It is our jurisdiction to maintain that road within them right of ways.
I say we fight it to the end.
Yeah, I think we gotta look after our road network. I, we gotta look after all of our road network, our bridges. You know, we gotta look after the, the, the waterways through our county and, and then obviously the folk, the folks as much as we can. I, just on that subject, I don't, did y'all get that, uh, a video that where the guy was ta- interviewing one of the fire chiefs over in Eastern Iowa? Or Central Iowa, anyway?
Other one Cindy sent out?
Yeah, I know, I was Cindy or Karen, one of them.
We're just thinking out loud and, I think we're all in agreement on, on our feelings about eminent domain. What happens if you just don't issue those permits that would be needed for to cross that person's ground?
But.
Will we be able to do that? I mean, I, I get what Paul's.
Back to what Craig said, I mean, there's no ruling, there's no.
Yeah, that's without a ruling.
What's our authority, what's not?
Right, it's not that it hasn't been ruled, it's just that I didn't find it.
Wow.
No.
But you, you know, I mean, you have this piece of ground here, you don't issue that one there, right?
Right. And technically up to the center of the road is considered part of that eminent domain.
Yep.
And so where we are, by giving them permission to cross, we are kinda stepping on that landowner's feet that says I don't want them on my property, but if we grant that permission, well.
That's what Paul.
Kind of a sticky wicket there, I just.
So, this is, excuse me, so all kinda new to me, but when you have a gravel road that runs down.
Yep.
So different landowners on both sides of the road. So each landowner owns to the center of the road. And then they grant an easement to the county to put the road there.
To maintain the road.
Thirty-three foot from the center each way.
Thirty-three foot from the center each side.
Generally thirty-three feet, yep.
And that easement grants the county the ability just to maintain that road and then they have to grant access to anyone that wants to bore underneath that road, the county gives that, not the landowner.
Technically, if the phone company wanted to plow a new phone line in, they should come to the landowner and get permission. They are just, they're backbone off the county's easement. So that question me with the.
But yet, we approved those easements.
Right, right, we do. My question is just that, then if the person on the south side of the road signed an easement with Summit, so Summit can go halfway through that road, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Without the county granting anything, or the county still.
I think we, 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 we're gonna we're gonna be a player because we have to maintain that road and we need to know what's buried in it or whatever within that, so. It, I think over the years, it's just been, well, the county grants that permission and, but really they need to be getting permission from the landowners as well. They, even if they aren't crossing the road, they're just paralleling.
I think once they get like, you know, if you.
Cardle through the road, but within that thirty-three feet.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
Yeah, I think if, once, if they get a contract with the landowner, that would, that would take them up to the center road. You know, and then, but then they still have to basically stop and get sign off on Paul's easement or sign on to Paul, I guess would be the better way. Yeah, but that, that's the great point is, you know, if you get on the side that Tim's on, if he's not wanting that and they have to use them in the domain, at what point do we actually grant it?
Right, but I'm just saying that if they get eminent domain, then that would be that other half of the road.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, so if the person on the other side of the road granted it and then they get eminent domain, wants to stop, I don't see what legal recourse the county would have to stop them going on either.
Probably legal recourse, probably not, but just seeing them at the fair and at church and it's a recourse that we'll be faced with.
Right, I think we should still be able to charge for that.
Yeah, yeah, to keep and maintain it, like like we brought up, so they aren't destroying things.
You're gonna have two, three years of extra maintenance.
Were they gonna try to bore most of the, at least the gravels, I mean, the dirt roads, they might try to, just trench, but.
For a number of years, they're gonna have extra maintenance everywhere they drive.
Especially if they trench, you're ready.
Prove some research thought about.
Oh.
Let's do it.
Okay, is that all you have?
Sorry, my short conversation.
Well, it's all right, it was your turn.
Your turn.
Ms. Hayden.
I can't keep mine short, but I will. Uh, we had our second meeting with the department heads concerning the HR one and housing help, you know, that they all had a week to kind of do some research and uh, and it would, everybody had called different people in the counties, their, their friends in the county. And at the end of it, uh there was really not a positive vibe from anyone. And basically to sum it up, they feel, you know, once we find out that they're all underpaid, we won't do, bring them up to where, where they say we're supposed to be, don't you think that's kinda the overview of it, Terry?
You're worried about future boards not living up to it too, is that?
I, I think they pointed right at this board also, uh that if they prove that they're all underpaid and understaffed, that we will say we don't have the funds to do it, it'll be a wasted fight.
Which we don't, I mean, go forward.
But I was going to go a little bit further into, you know, some of the research that uh, you know, Terry had done. And then looking at this chart that ISAC does provide, I'll be just a minute, Paul, and then I'll be done, they didn't give me much time. So looking at it, Hope County is uh, just so that we can kinda understand, Hope County is uh number one in population and number one ranked for wages, okay, starting there, right? It's, that's the way it is, they have the most population and they're paying the most.
To their county employees?
Right, 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 uh elected officials only, elected officials only. So, you know, it kinda follows along a little bit, Dallas is sixth in population and fourth in what they pay, actually, I just looked at the treasure, I'm just kinda doing apples to apples with Terry's support. So with Crawford County, we're forty-sixth in population, but we're seventy-eight ranking in the way we pay them. So I, I, I think we got a little bit out of whack there because if I get, so somewhere in the middle, so if I don't.
You're discounting the elected official.
I'm just, I'm actually just looking at the treasure right now.
Okay.
Because if we look at all elected officials, it, the, the report, see how small this is just for treasures? It's more convoluted, but I think, so, so what, somebody wondered, why don't we just start doing ourselves, why we just don't see where we're at? You know, who wants to take that job on, that's why we hire people to do things, uh.
Yeah.
Uh but I, I just, the numbers are all there, but I wanna repeat that Crawford County is forty-sixth in population, we're forty-sixth. And we're seventy-eight in the ranking of how we pay our treasurer. Hope County is one and one, we're forty-sixth and seventy-eight, so I don't really know how this proves that, that they're historically underpaid.
So you can read that two ways, you could say, you know what, we just need less people.
Less population.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's happening, so.
You need to go the whole only one side, so higher than the other.
It, it only makes sense if you look at it as one and one, you know, they're the, they have the most population, they're, they have the highest. So if you look at Dallas, it kinda stays, I was trying to just kinda show where it gets a little, okay? And then Crawford is, if you look at Crawford, forty-sixth and seventy-eight.
You are eighty-two.
So we're seven, ranked seventy-eighth in what we are paying.
Yes.
But we're forty-sixth.
It's not good, it's not good to be seventy-eight. I mean, you know, you wanna be closer probably to your population ranking.
That's kinda why I started with one, you know, kind of uh so the, the numbers, she kinda did, kinda took smaller ones to kind of, and so her thought is that uh people, counties that are smaller make that much more than she does. So she did her own little uh.
Who did?
Uh, Carrie, just to kinda help out, and it was very, it was, yeah.
Money is her business.
Yeah, yeah, and it's all good, I just wanted to let you know that at this point in time, based on what the department heads want, they're not interested in hiring somebody to come in here or, you know, twenty thousand dollars. The, some of the uh people that called other counties said that the process was horrendous and that uh they felt that ranking coworkers, you know, when they're ranking those jobs, they were, didn't seem like they were making a fair. Uh they felt that they would be doing a lot of the work, you know, it's, it's gonna take more work for them to, to go and do all these different reports, get all of that. And they're, at the end of the day, really what, what it came around to is that it's really not up to us what they pay their employees. I, I took that as my takeaway, how about you, Terry?
Right.
Terry was right there.
And no matter what you find out in that report, they don't have to listen to it.
Pretty much, pick and choose what they want.
Is what they said.
Pretty much.
What was said, I shouldn't say. What was said, I shouldn't say they said.
Well, I think it's good, I mean, you, you need to listen to the employees, and, uh, I mean, I think it's right for us to bring new things to them, to look at them, and they analyze it, they look at it, and they say, no, this is something we just don't want, that's fine.
We tried to give the jobs a value, so we had a data to base it on, so it wasn't always this, uh, well, we're not paid enough. I, I think it's important to actually know that, so we can do something about it, rather than we just don't feel like we're paid enough, you know, I wanted it to be, be based more on data and facts, and that's not really, even if we had that number, it's, what are we gonna do about it? If it's too low, when we're going into a, uh, budget season where we're a little iffy on where our income's gonna come from, we're being told it's gonna be cut, especially in twenty twenty-five with the scene, you know, how do we make, uh, pledges and promises that, well, we see that you're a little bit low, so we're gonna take a gradual three-year process and get you higher, when we know that we're gonna be struggling to pay the, so I'm just saying it's dead in the water.
Well, I, yeah, excuse us a bit, that, that's a good point, because we're also, the first thing we talked about, we're worrying about our insurance. And, and obviously, if we're worrying about having to creep the, a possible, you know, contribution from them, maybe that's another reason we have to give them a little more of a pay increase is to help. Because I mean, I think, Kyle and I have talked about it numerous times, you know, when you're, when you're talking about that one point five, you know, I mean, you gotta have a safety threshold, because you just don't know, like last year where we gobbled up four hundred thousand dollars pretty quick. You know, and luckily that tapered back off and didn't keep dropping down.
It was a good meeting, everybody, you know, they came to the first one, they came to the second one, so we kept everybody interested.
Something to really put our minds.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Now we know where we stand.
Got something to work on, actually.
And that's just kind of the, uh, I've got a meeting this afternoon at one with the, uh, coalition, and so we'll just keep things going, we'll talk more about, the generators and things like that when Jake comes in, so, another research week on how that came to be where we're at with that.
I get my input and then race.
I've got input from a lot of different people, including propane.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
But, I, I'll, I'll update you on the summer conference someday. Mr. Osman, if you'd like to come up here and get us.
Yeah, I'm very one on this beautiful day. Late summer.
We got to.
Well, um, saw an article that Dan wrote, uh, for the, uh, it was a free press, but, so the public's informed, and it, as I was told, Dan, I said, we, we really have nothing to hide here, we just want to make sure that we, you know, try to time the, uh, information, uh, appropriately, or if we can, but anyhow, um, so we have a solution. It's been worked on, we should have a plan, a certified plan, hopefully by the end of the week, if not early next week, on a, on a, uh, solution to that, uh, problem, so. It's kind of, I believe I shared with you, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, kind of a cross beam that's gonna incorporate all the existing piling. And then, uh, there'll be piling driven on either side of the bridge, and, and, and then we'll just kind of basically build this massive beam there, so, and I, I talked to Lowell this morning with Kevin Burns, he said, it's actually gonna be a little less than we originally, you know, initially had thought in terms of the amount of piling and, and that, so. Um, so yeah, we're working on, and.
With no additional cost.
No, no, this is all the contractor, and he's been, he's been very upfront from, from day one, you know, and you know, we haven't tried to, you know, if you, if you, anybody that's been in construction knows things happen, we, we wish they didn't, we wish they haven't. But, uh, the best thing to do is to not get into a adversarial, uh, situation if you can. And this, this has never had that from day one, it's been, hey, let's try to work together and solve it. Their consultant, uh, stepped down last week on Wednesday, and so then they hired our consultant, who's now doing the design for that, so. Yeah.
So they'd be doing something on the upstream side.
So, yeah, so Wednesday was an interesting day.
I heard, I talked to a friend of yours who said, hey, I talked to Paul today, he said it was the worst day ever, that was last Wednesday.
It was the worst day I've ever had, yeah, and, uh, I mean, nothing was going right, nothing. And, uh, but we got it all figured out.
Do they have a timeframe as to?
Well, once, as soon as we get a set of stamp plans, they're, they're gonna go to work, you know, piling should be available, I mean, we've been ordering piling, I mean, they're, you know, so I'm, I'm hoping there's piling sitting around, and I'm gonna call, uh, Oden Enterprises, because that's where we get all of our H piling, just check with them, I don't know where Graves gets theirs from, but just start checking around and saying, hey, have you got any of these laying in your yard, or what's the availability, so we can go on it right away. If we get going on this right away, say next week, you know, say maybe a three-week construction period, maybe four, um, then they can be working on approach labs, you know, everything just kind of came to fall till we figure out what we, you know, what we're gonna do. There's other items that can be worked on the bridge, uh, along with this. And so, I'm still hopeful by harvest time.
I appreciate you doing all you can do to help them, so that we can have this thing hopefully open for harvest.
Yeah, it's just much better to get along, you know, it, it, we, we, we're gonna have a little cost in consulting, the, the initial, but as soon as they, they hired our consultant to work for our meters, charts, and down, so, but, you know, again, it's just much better to foster this better, you know, kind of a diplomatic, uh, relationship. They're, they're a good contractor, you know, if something go wrong, it, uh, it happens, and so, um, you know, that, that just builds rapport for future bidders, too, that they know, they're not gonna come in here in Crawford County and get beat up, and you know, your son's in the business, too, nothing ever goes right.
Yeah, I know. So what, what's the cost? I mean, is there a, a cost that you kind of know it's gonna cost that company?
You know.
Or above what they bid and what money actually.
I'm not even gonna throw a number out right now, because I don't think it'd be fair to them, or anybody for that matter, they're just gonna take care of it. It's gonna be very expensive.
That's good enough.
I'll leave it at that. And they know that. And so, they're willing to just whatever they come up with, they're gonna put that in, and we're gonna move forward, so.
I like that they're not giving us some grief, they're just gonna do their part, not at all. That's, that says a lot about the adults in the room.
Yeah, 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 we just all gotta figure it out, so that's, that's where we're at. Um, you know, if someone asks you, you know, we got nothing to hide, it happened, you know, we're just trying to figure it out, um, and I think, you know, we'll. We're here in six weeks, we're all breathing a lot easier. Yeah, so.
Simple.
Yeah. The, uh, the Nell Shop, not really nothing new there, we're just kind of, a lot of paperwork shuffling on, submittals of, uh, proposed products and stuff there. Um, September, probably September, October, um, I got down here a little bit later, um, the, uh, the city of Nellah call, and, uh, next, well, not next week, but the week after, um, maybe we could go down a couple of the board members out, and maybe the whole board, maybe we can go down there and have lunch or something. But anyhow, they're kind of interested in our building, and then they have land that's on the east of where our new shop's gonna be, then there's land that they have on the west side. I don't know.
Switch back and forth.
There's a possibility of maybe doing some things that are mutually beneficial. And now's the time to do it.
Exactly.
Because we could, we could always.
And then you can partner with us so far through things.
That's what I told Sean, you know, I said, hey, you know, they, and, and the deeds and everything have been drawn up, we're just, we're in a waiting period for attorneys to review stuff, and uh, so we had to do the deed and the easement, and as soon as that is approved, we'll, we'll get it approved, and, and that fence up will take place on the primary, you know, on the highway. So I think, yes, it's worth the discussion with both governmental bodies, that, you know, maybe it'll look out good for both of us. So, um, probably that week of, uh, the twenty-ninth, I think, of August.
That's two weeks.
Yeah. Tuesday fifth, September, I mean, there's no huge sense of urgency, other than the fact that you just, it changes the building. You know, orientation, but, um, you know, it's up to you, and you'll be gone, but.
Yeah, I don't, you know, as long as it's beneficial to, I don't see, I don't, no. Three thousand foot deal, it looks like it could be beneficial to both, so.
So can I tell, we just have, not the whole board, but if a couple of you want to go down after the board meeting?
As long as we're not getting a nuclear waste dump, I hope so.
What date was it?
August twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty ninth.
And that's, uh, that's. Kind of skipped out.
Be walking back from Arizona.
Getting back to school.
Yeah.
Everybody's going back.
Hmm, I just gotta be back by what time you plan on doing it?
After.
After the meeting, if that works out.
Put clean clothes on for Sweet Freedom thing for.
Oh. Um, the, uh, daily projects that working on AM Avenue. Uh, over, uh, by Vale and they count that they'll, they'll go over three eightieth south of highway thirty. And just keep cranking along, so. Um, the, uh, uh, bridge replacement, the bridge crews down on W Avenue. They'll have both of these projects will probably be done this week or very close to being done. And then they're gonna move to the bridge at Buck Grove. Remember we had that bridge that we had to redo the.
Yeah.
And, and so we're gonna replace that. Uh, the pony truss, or excuse me, it's a rainbow truss. So it's one of those historical bridges that we're gonna put in shop. Here, uh, just stored for now, but. I was talking to Chris Gosh. Uh, Tim and I went out there, there, that bridge crosses the lake, but it can't round there.
I see she's.
It's settled, but I think what happened is the one side went up is probably what happened. We went and looked at that. There's, there's some decayed severely decayed piling into that, but they're not having any function. Cause somebody replaced them with two new ones. They're just old ones. But anyhow, we went over to look at an interpretive board, cause there's an interpretive board, which is really cool. If you ever get a chance to go out there, walk that trail, it's an interpretive board at the rainbow truss that's out there. And we were walking back and then there's a wooden bridge on it in that same area here that lake there. And we, we, cause it was, so you walk out of the coffee path and then there's a narrower kind of a gravel. Comes back to this wooden bridge. It's really. So we went out there to look for one, which is okay. Found another one. So remember about Solc's bridge with those twelve by twelves that were. And it's just, that's your bridge, so it's not like it's. Might be a good place for this. Rainbow, rainbow trust, have two of them very close to one another. But Tim and I looked at it, think we can get in there, sneak down that hill for that, uh, open shelter. Get right in and, and put it in there, if that's where the.
But just places, Danny.
Yeah, we've got another one sitting up in slush, we get the yard, you know, there's, they're not hurting anything, but. Chris will probably discuss that with you. Now it's on your conservation meeting, so. You know, it just is a, well, moving out to your heels. Anyhow, so that's where they're, they're at. Uh, they'll work on that one next, and then we're gonna go over on our avenue. Uh, just west of, uh, M fifty five to probably finish the route for bridges. Roadside crew, they're cranking out the, we got everything sprayed. We switched to a Escort Duracur instead of the Garland two four D that we've been using in the past, so. Hear any feedback, let us know, but we're hoping that hits a little better kill on some of the trees, especially those ash trees. Those little ash trees are just looking like they're gonna kill, so.
Unless you're a borg.
What are you talking about? Yeah, that's right, yeah. Those little ash trees, just those little, you know, three, two, three year old ash trees. Yeah, early smoking, I mean, yeah, the ash pork, I don't know if they get those little aggressive ones or not, if they just attack the old ones. There's a lot of dead ash trees around, so. Um, but anyhow, guys doing, we got all the, like I said, all sprains done, we're seeding. Uh, and then they're gonna start mowing next week, and our mower tractor should be close to being ready. Uh, we're, we are gonna do something different this year. We, we kinda did something different already, we sprayed the level B roads. Okay, they just kinda got a little less messy, especially the ones with the graded. Um, and then we're gonna go in and try to mow them too. So we might run all three of those mower tractors for a while this fall, try to clean some, uh, hope that's all right.
That'd be good.
Yeah, so. And then the other mower tractor.
We're not gonna keep them in check. These are not level B road and grow just as fast they do, huh?
They do, yeah, so that's what we've been doing a lot of grading. Boy, it doesn't take than three or four years, you got, you got willows, you know.
You can't plant a tree in your yard and get it throw like that.
Yeah, isn't that funny?
It is, yeah, so.
It's fine on a terrace, yeah.
Or in your terrace, yeah. Terrace is a road bench, uh, favorite place for it. But item four, I have this on here for approval, we talked about this, and when they had, put together a proposal. So this would be something that would be delivered hopefully in the spring, paid for after July first, it's the twenty twenty five budget.
You know, what kind of updates are in them for our extra expense? Any of that, are they pretty much?
Basically the same motor grader, same price. Same motor grader. Yeah.
Availability.
You said same price?
Same price as last year's, yeah, there was no price increase. They took a bunch of them the last couple of years. Now there will be a price increase after two, January one, so.
This chair will make a motion to approve by number four.
He has a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty four model year cat one fifty joy B R motor grader. From Ziegler Cat, the amount of four hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and eighty.
Pending.
Okay, three hundred and eighty two thousand dollars to be paid in F Y twenty twenty five, pending budget approval.
So.
Ceded by Mr. Dozart.
Who will get it?
Any further discussion?
I can't tell you right off the top. I think Gene's about to do, he's forgotten one.
Yeah. Give it to this.
She's just talking the day off, she wants to run one.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, here both side, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is this, uh, Henningson, uh, confined animal feeding operation. Basically, this was built before the matrix system was put into place. But it was grandfathered in, but, uh. It's a swine facility that's just being converted to a beef facilities, separation distances are all the same. So really I published the notice, I don't know if we've got any comments from anyone. And if we haven't, if there are no comments here, uh, we basically just send them a copy of the notice, the proof of publication and email, say there are no comments. And we're okay with the approval, so that's, that's how simple this is. It's a little different than the other ones.
So when they, when they're doing this, do they have like any kind of engineer report on, on the stuff? Or, I mean, as far as structure, floor strikes, all that kind of?
No idea, I mean, you got a completely different animal.
That's what I mean.
Well, it sounds like they're putting in a hundred and fifty two hundred pound calves.
Right. It is also their background.
We're not finishing.
They're not putting fourteen hundred pound cattle out there.
No.
Well, that was what made me a little.
So that's part of.
I mean, I didn't ask why.
How many head you got, what the animal unit is.
So there are really not gonna be any weights, weight's gonna be pretty similar once we're currently used to.
Yeah.
The unique thing is they're not changing, having to go put a bunk in or anything like that. They're using the same hog feeder, feed lines, cup waters, that's already there.
That's good, that's, I mean, it's, you know, apparently the, the beef must have a bigger market or a better margin.
Right, I think Dean's perspective, he got a contract with the beef guy that he could get the whole guy.
Right.
Yeah.
So his, his building was empty. Then it was costing him money.
Okay.
So now he's got the ability to put beef in there and sign a contract. It'll pay him so much sense.
But I'd like to put Iowa a little bit further up on the beef market, beef world. We can do it.
But he lies a, a older swine facility in a different capacity, hell.
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, according to the D N R, there's more of these.
That's what I read, I, from talking to Dean, I was unaware that there was more of these happening.
Yeah, so.
It must say fairly commonplace, but it is.
It's happening.
Becoming more and more.
Will be saying more of these probably.
I think so.
Yeah, a good chance.
Alright.
So do you?
And we need a motion?
Yeah, just basically a motion to approve, uh, comic, just saying we have no comments. You know, there are, really, there are no comments, other than it's okay to approve it, I guess, be a motion to, uh.
Approve the conversion?
To, to approve the conversion.
I'll make a motion to approve the conversion for, uh, Henningson Farms.
We have a motion to approve the comments. Or, excuse me, approve the, approve the conversion of the swine facility to a beef facility at Henningson Farms C A F O site. And cited by Mr. Schultz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, the motor grader training, first of all, you know, the, the, the park conservation has always allowed us to use their building up there and continue to. So we appreciate that, and I called Chris, thanking for that. It's just, it's a nice facility up there, and we had it the whole day, uh, last Wednesday. We were gonna do Tuesday, but then it was supposed to rain on Wednesday, so we kinda flipped things around. They're very good to work with, so it's just a nice, it's a nice facility to have available for training. And it worked out really well for us, we were in there all day, but, uh, I thought the training went really well. Um, the, uh, you know, the comments back, where this guy really knows his stuff. And, uh, you know, honestly, there's, none of us, myself included, really have much experience with any, in operating a motor grader. And that's what this guy did for twenty years, and, and he's also, he's a, he's a veteran. And, um, just has this. That respectful, respectful presence about him, uh, you know, and, and of course, you know, the guys have been around for twenty seven years. And, uh, why are we here? And he kinda brought all that together, and at the end of the day, everybody was, was pretty.
Even our old veterans, motor grader operators were happy they were there.
Yeah, that's good there, so.
You think everybody kinda learned something that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like a, you know, light went on and they said, oh, I haven't thought of that.
Yeah, and when they first started digging in and people were, what the heck, you know, you're making a mess of things, and it's reshaping the roads is a process. And, you know, and so we know where we wanna be, like the general public, oh, this is not right, okay? But, um, but getting them there, showing them how to, how to use that machine, I mean, he just, he, he was really, really good. So he, uh, he'd like to come, I asked him if I could get some of these. Uh, these are a little booklet, and I'll leave this here if anybody wants to look through it. But he said, really, what I'd like to do, Paul, is I'd like to come in and spend a half an hour, forty five minutes with your board.
Oh.
Okay, and, uh, and come back and just, you know, it's, I want to have him come back this fall, cause some of the guys said, you know, this is a group exercise. So we have, you know, a day of classroom, they're in there from seven to four thirty, okay? And then they go out on a day in the field, well, you got seven day operators, just trying to, you know.
Right.
Engage all of them, and they got a lot done, but there were some guys said, boy, I'd really like to have him just come and spend an hour with us, one on one. And so I talked to him, he's gonna come back and do that.
Excellent.
And when he does that, I'll try to schedule that so he can come in here and spend a half an hour. So it was, you know, it was around a five thousand dollar deal, but three days worth of training for all of our operators.
Well, if we can cut some of them washboards out, that's cheap.
He didn't even really get to that.
Oh.
So that's why he's coming back next year, we already talked about that. But to, this was about edges and getting, you know, getting the edges off the road.
Yeah.
And getting the water off the road in that.
Make a lot of difference right there.
You know, if we can get everybody to buy into this, we're gonna have, you know, because the process requires that you have these windrows. Remember back in the day, and I mean, we've gotten away from it because the public doesn't really like it, okay? But if we do it kinda selectively and do it in the July, August timeframe, you're gonna end up with a windrow on one side, and then you're working that windrow. And just bring them, instead of taking and cutting the material and just throwing it off, we're bringing it onto the road through a, through a progressive process. It takes several weeks to, to, to get a mild road reshaped. I mean, the, the operators, and they're working all the time, and just he works it, and lets it sit, and it comes back, and does a little bit more. So we'll start seeing some of that.
Can't take in place.
So previously, what did you do for training?
Well, we put them with the experienced operators every couple of weeks.
This is rare to have someone outside come in.
We, yeah, we just, it's never, it's never really been available.
How'd you find him?
Uh, at conference last year.
Well, so.
Yeah, and a number of counties have picked up on it. And, you know, cause the guy really is good at what he does, and everybody's kinda finding that out. So, um, we had a training program through L T A P, the local technical assistance program. It was a two day program where you go one day class and one day in the field. And the guys would come, you know, so we always send them to that, and then we put them in with a blade operator, experienced operator, until they felt comfortable to be on the ground. That's how we've done it in the past. And so, uh, this just brings kind of a whole nother level.
Continuing it.
Yeah, yeah, we all, we, we can all learn in everything we do. And, and so.
Amazing way to pick up at conferences, just.
Yeah.
Now it does.
Yeah, he had a roof there, and it was Jackson's heavy equipment, I stopped talking to him, it's Tim and his wife, and she goes with him wherever they go, she's out there the whole day. And he walked, he, he walked thirteen miles in one day. Back and forth, he's just following me, so, yeah. So, uh, nice people, yeah, very, very, that's very, very good program, I thought. Um, the, uh, Albanian road, uh, yeah, that, that was the other thing last Wednesday that wasn't going well. Um, that they had a, you know, their water injecting system wasn't working right, so we were all over the place on moisture on it, that, that this doesn't work. If you get twelve inches of stuff that you don't know what your moisture content is, it's not working. So they, they had to kinda shut down, wrap up what they had opened up, and bring a new machine in the next day, and then it worked great. Looked really good, so I mean, that is, it's hard, you know, so, and, and they're seal coating today, they. Today is drizzled out, yesterday is never quit, and so today they're gonna, they'll, they'll be done by noon. Cool, so, yeah, I mean, I, I, I call it twelve inches of redneck concrete, okay? I mean, you just, you got, you got rock, we dumped on there about three inches thick, about the two by four. Um, you add a bunch of cement to it, and we proportioned it out, measured it out, so that should be eight percent. And we take and mix it twelve inches deep and blend it all up and add water to it, and, um, recompact it, blade it, see what this still go.
So noon today, something to be driving on it?
They're running on it right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
I mean, you think about, I mean, what that could save us in the long run.
Well, you know, we talked about that this morning, how, you know, that particular road, I mean, we're always hauling crush lines still on it. You know, and the twelve inches now, that's never going away. I mean, that's a, that's a engineered base, it's always gonna be there. And so, you know, remember when they were here, um, Tom, Michael, um, you know, a year and a half, two years ago now.
Yep, I sure remember.
We're talking about the auto seal, and it was like fifty to sixty thousand dollars a mile, and they're correct, but you gotta have a base underneath of it.
That was always your concern.
If you don't have a base, it, it, it's just a, that's a thin, that's just basically giving you a dust free surface, but you gotta have something to support that. So, yeah, I think it's a good option, it's kind of a tweener road, it's between paved road and a gravel road. You know, and so there's some roads that just don't maybe justify spending that expense on.
But these have, high traffic roads, I mean, and we've got a good number of them that probably could use something like this, if it holds up.
Yeah, I, I think we'll watch this for, you know, for a few years or a couple of years, but I, I mean, as you start to transition from grading, you know, we're spending a lot of money on grading. You can take that money and invest that in, in these types of roads, I think it's gonna be something, you know, we switch to, so. The, uh, cell phones for the foreman again, you know, it's, it's working better, but, um, you know, to get. Well, the, the, I mean, the service, you know, Michelle, she's great, but you get on the phone with their, their service techs, and, and you could be on there for an hour. Or two hours, and you don't get anywhere. Or, you know, it's just, and I know we have to be, it's a business plan, and I don't know if there's any other way that that could be looked at, but. You know, the phones they offer, yeah, they're, they're an iPhone seven, they're, they're a new iPhone seven. We're all on iPhone fourteens, okay? I don't have any problem with charging, you know, the problems are, you know, they, they start to operate really slow. Like we got this storm here a couple of weeks ago, Sean couldn't even use his radar, cause it just sits there for minutes. And the charging, they, they don't, they don't stay charged. Uh, I mean, it's something, I mean, imagine if your cell phone wasn't.
It's a dream of mine.
Take all of these away.
I imagine.
There's probably a lot of things you'd rather give up than your cell phone. Uh, but, you know, I'm just. We're just, I don't know if there's, you know, like Sean's even at the point where he, he just wants to buy his own, he wants to keep his own number, but he said, I'll just go buy my own. But yeah, our employees, if they're using Ford, shouldn't have to buy their own. I mean, I do electively, I've always had my own phone, I just. But, uh, an option would be, you know, and that's what we talked about, but then they said, well, you, you know, if you do upgrade, you gotta pay for it yourself, and I just don't think that's right. I think our employees need a better pilot to do their job, and we should pay for it.
These are currently counting. No, I don't think.
They carry two phones, you know, employees shouldn't be in that.
Right.
Problem is, is going through the plan that we have, you know, we could spend, you know, I, I don't know what it would cost to get the latest phone. But, um, but I, I just don't think it should be the employees.
Isn't it an option to, and I, I know we used to kinda go like that bank, that they paid a portion of their cell phone, so they upgraded on their own phones. So because carrying two phones can't be fun people.
It, it isn't, but I think the guys kinda prefer, you know, some prefer that, I, for me, it's a pain carrying one, to be honest with you, they, they, they're okay with that. But I'm just saying, you know, the phone, and, and the other thing is, is then they have their personal number.
Right, there's pros and cons to both ways.
There, there are, and, and we kinda discussed that, and I said, well, maybe we just do a stipend, you get your own phone, and we don't worry.
That's true, that's.
Um, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, but when we, um, when we go to electronic timekeeping, we're gonna have to have some method of the outline shots. We're gonna have to have some way for our employees to communicate that. So, you know, maybe that's a time for a bigger discussion, and then we're, we're, you know, we're doing the fleet management too. Uh, but just, again, as we start moving into more of a, a, uh, digital age in terms of timekeeping and fleet management. Uh, and the issues that we've been having, maybe we, we revisit that one. So I'll leave it at that for now, they're working okay, they're just not great. The, uh, the last item is the, the modifications to the pipe yard now, different C D L trainings. You know, Tim's makes it something, to me, they'll get, somebody just let us know what we really do. If there's a.
Dave and I were down there, and on the south side of the main driveway.
Yeah.
Those pipes that are there, they just need to be picked up and shoved back to where like they're flush with the rack.
And that's all.
That's all we need to do.
And then we're, we're talking about.
The, the bands and stuff, as long as that would be like all flush with the south, the north side of the south pipe rack.
Yep.
That's, that's all the room you need.
Okay, so we just got that zone, that's all it needs to be done.
That's all it needs, and if you wanted to asphalt it or something, that's, when there's a contractor in the area, that'd be.
And you're like talking about asphalt, six foot, ten foot? Just along the south side?
There's enough, technically enough room as it is, but they're afraid of the, if something would go awry, that, the tester wouldn't have room to get out of the way.
Right.
So they just need that shoved back, that three foot or what have you, so.
You get a lead out of the way if it's asphalted?
No, they said, they said, it's fine being gravel, but I just, if we actually enhance your yard and someday that when there's a. And with a hand.
Right.
So just.
More of an all weather deal, but where they do it now presently, where they do their alley dock back, you know, that little shed travel currently, so it's not like it's. They'll just put some of them little grade brooms in to mark where they need put cones, so.
So basically, six foot on the south side of the existing drive should be paved all the way.
They said it don't need to be, but it'd be nice for us.
Okay, okay, so it's nothing that needs to be done immediately.
Right.
Very good.
Will we mow the ditches before we do any of these major type things here?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's why.
Keep the big clumps out of, I think that, when we talk about them windrows that you were talking about, I think that was always the big clumps of grass was what always bothered them.
Oh, I know, I remember when I first started, they'd be balls.
Process, if you start on it and you know you're gonna do it, you keep that grass.
And back.
Blade it back.
Well, honestly, you know, if you know you're gonna do it, you just go out there a week ahead of time, and you mow it, that grass rises up, dies, and then you go out there and you start the process. And that's always been available to them, my wife told the guys, I said, if you, if you need to, the mowers are here.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, maybe we keep the third mower tractor, we'll just leave it around for that.
Not a bad idea either.
So the guys can just do with that. Yeah, yeah, cause I mean.
Just a thought.
No, it, yeah, and, and, you know, I, I've told this a number of other times, I mean, we can do all the bridge work, all the paving work, all the grading work at the moment. But what people really focus on is that gravel road. Back and forth. And so that's really important to the public, that's where we get most of the help.
People that run the mower graders are not the experts, farmers that live there. They'll tell you how to run that.
Well, they'll tell you how they used to do it when it was better.
Yeah, you know what's really interesting, Greg, is this has even risen, I mean, any of you that are farm bureau members, this has risen to the level of their, in their questionnaire. Is should new blade operators be required to have training before they start? Be a requirement? I, I, that's, that's, that's government going too far, in my opinion, okay? But I mean, it's, 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 it's risen to that level of concern by, by the public. So, uh, so this is good that this guy came along. And it would be, be good, uh, to, uh, to continue to use him.
Oh, you, oh, there's a lot of good stuff. You're saying a lot, we're here to serve our.
Our town. And, and every time, every time we get an opportunity to be better, cause there's always room for improvement, you know, and try to find it, so.
Thanks, Paul.
You bet.
Thank you, Paul, we appreciate it. We're running, running a little long here, but that's all right, good info, he was gone last week, right? Okay, next up on our agenda is, uh, Mr. Hunsecker, if you would please come forward.
Morning, Rick.
Three twenty twelve's executive director. I think we, most of us know it.
I think so. Okay, I'm here to talk about the revolving. Uh, do you recall that I had requested from each of the six counties money to match? And everybody put it in twenty five thousand here for two years, this fiscal year was. A lapse one of those, so before I talk about the issue, this is just a summary of where we are. This is for all the revolving loan funds, of those that we have received grants from E D A and from U S D A, and then the U S D A loans that we have. We've got about a seven point two million dollar capital base. Um, so you, you see the original county investment across the top, it has been, that does not include the fifty thousand that each of the counties just put in.
What did they do though as investments?
Um, over time, the first one was in ninety five, and the reason that it's different, um. Green, Guthrie, and Crawford were eligible, or the first one's eligible for E D A R L F. We made that application, did it by population, while it was sitting in Denver, Carroll became eligible, but they did it based on population, so Carroll is a little bit higher, cause they put in the match to match their population. SAC and Auden were not eligible at the time because of disaster, and that's actually the issue that I wanna talk to you about, about the current opportunity we have. But they weren't eligible, so they didn't put in any match at the time. We instead applied for, and you got three dollars for every dollar at that time from the E D A fund, you and the other three counties. SAC and Auden got four dollars for every dollar, and we got out of a national pool for a grant through U S D A. And all six counties are eligible for that, but we only loaned into Auden and SAC since they put in the match, and they weren't eligible for the other fund. A disaster came along, and because of a FEMA declared disaster, you can amend a county ends, and both of those counties at the time got that declaration, so we amended them in. They didn't put any match into the E D A fund, but the other four counties hadn't put any match into U S D A, so that's the reason for the difference. It goes back, that was ninety five, ninety six, so it goes back almost thirty years. Uh, since that time, there were other opportunities, particularly through the I R P, which is a loan that we have from U S D A. We did match for that fund, uh, in two thousand, in two thousand seven, sorry, two thousand, two thousand five, and two thousand seventeen. Three different loans that we took out. The other E D A pots of money in nine, in, uh, two thousand eight is a result of the floods, again, were eligible because of the disaster. Got the state of Iowa to match at that time, and so the counties didn't have to put in any match. Got a supplement in two thousand twelve to that same amount of money, and because the match that we had from the state was actually higher than other regions in the state had matched. I asked the feds to have us get, that award is about six hundred thousand zero match, which they did. And then, as a result of COVID, E D A doubled, pretty much the money that we had in our fund, which for E D A dollars was about one point eight million, they did that without match. So that's why you see our total match from the counties is about six hundred thousand for a seven point two million dollar capital base, cause we got a lot of it without matching. And then this most recent loan that we just applied for from U S D A, uh, we got a zero percent match because it wasn't required, and I thought we'd have enough points and wouldn't need to. Uh, we got a zero percent match because it wasn't required, and I thought we'd have enough points and wouldn't need to buy it, and that's what ended up happening. So, this is just to give you, this goes back to nineteen ninety five, and we've made a hundred and forty four loans in that period of time. Uh, for about fourteen million dollars. You see the total, all projects is a hundred eight million. Now, I do have a list of projects, if you want to see them individually in Crawford County. Uh, if you do look at these, job creation may look a little off, that's what was in the application. When we originally funded it, and some of these businesses no longer in business, either because they died. Uh, or they may have sold, or they may have been renamed, but you'll, so there are some ones on here that you may notice are. No longer in business. We haven't, in these funds, lost much. We've had a few loans go bad. Uh, in some cases, we had a loan loss reserve that we were able to take care of it, so. I think our most recent EDA fund, we might be a little bit underwater as far as not holding the capital base. Other, otherwise, I think our capital base is pretty much intact from the last thirty years. Uh, because we do, we do try to collect as, as much as we can. So, here's the issue. You know, you put your fifty thousand in, there is currently an opportunity that I applied for. As a result of the winter deratio last year, there was a disaster declaration. Nofo, notice of funding opportunity that just came out from EDA this summer, uh, for disaster projects and revolving loan funds are eligible. And so Crawford, though, and Carroll are not declared disaster counties, but in the past, EDA has looked at it as a district rule. That you're a district, you're a regional economic development district, economies don't stop accounting boundaries. My theory project in Carroll or in Dennison may very well benefit SAC or Audubon in disaster counties. Shelby's is a disaster declared county, Calhoun, the, um, Shelby, Calhoun are not ours, but, you know, economies don't stop accounting boundaries. Uh, so, EDA went and their regional council and their national council said. Can't include those two counties in the application because they're not eligible. It doesn't matter. Whether or not businesses that are there could benefit the economy in the other counties. So, here's the thing, disaster we can get. I, we had three hundred thousand between the six counties. I asked for one point two million. So we have a one point five million dollar fund, four million dollars of federal for every dollar. We are unable to include Carroll and Crawford. So, this is what I would like to do, and why I'm talking to you, and I'll be talking at a curve board on Monday. I would still like to include Carroll and Crawford's match to try to leverage as much federal money as possible. I, I don't know that I can get to one point five million. They are, they're apparently, they have a review committee that looks at these. And they doubted our ability in our rural region to get out one point five million. Uh, although the staff that worked for EDA reminded them, we were one of the fir-, we got one point eight million from COVID. And we were one of the first regions in the country to deploy all of our money. We did it within six months, but we had it committed. And so, part of it is going to be finding the deal flow, but I gotta find it in Audubon, SAC, Green, and Guthrie counties to justify it. So, why would, you know, the question would be, why would you want to invest? Uh, Crawford County or Carroll County money in a fund that your business is ineligible for? These are the answers that I have for you, which you can determine whether you agree with or not. Uh, first is that if there is a disaster declaration, which there will be, for Crawford County, Carroll County, we can amend. Those counties into that fund when that happens. That could happen next year, it could happen three years from now, it could happen ten years from now. But that's what happened with Audubon and SAC. They were not initially eligible. We were able to amend them in. When that happens, this money will be there. The time to strike and, and get the matches now. So, even if you were eligible a year from now or two years from now, there may be a disaster nofo, there may not be. The only reason there's one now is because of the hurricanes that happened in the south. There would have never been one for the winter deratio. But because of the way politics works, and they want to have money around the country, we're eligible, and the Denver region has money available. So, that's the first, is that you eventually could be added in. My second reason, go ahead.
The other reason I'm asking is, is there a, a waiting time period for us to be amended in?
No, it's whenever you would get a FEMA Stafford Act disaster declaration.
Just wanted to make sure it was like.
Which, in the past for us, have been drought, it's been wind, it's been tornado, it's been flood.
Okay.
Generally, it's gonna be some disaster like that and COVID. So, hopefully, we don't have another one like that. Um, second reason, these funds defederalize can be defederalized after fi-, after seven years. So, once we get our final money spent, seven years from that, from the closeout letter from EDA, we can defederalize. So the money, the grant we got in ninety five has been defederalized. The grant that we got in two thousand eight has been defederalized.
What does that mean?
Means that, um, you, we can use the money for any economic development purpose we wish to do. As long as it follows Davis Bacon. That was the, the language in, in, and for years, we had to report. This was only eligible maybe three years ago to defederalize. So we were reporting every year. The money we were lending, all the ratios that we had lent out, we had to follow all the federal environmental regulations. Uh, including historic preservation and all of that. This money would kept all of its federal identity. And, and that included funds that were word in the late seventies. Some of these funds had been around almost fifty years. And still were reporting federally. And then if you had a problem, if you had a high default rate, then they started making you report every six months. We always had an A rating on our funds, but by their point system, and so we only had to report once a year. So, we have these defederalized funds. It also means we can do things that the feds won't let you do. Like, we were, we have to loan these funds out if we get them four percent below prime. Or four percent, whichever is higher, unless our plan allows us to go seventy five percent. There's a convoluted formula. But we can set our own interest rates on the defederalized money. We can't do spec buildings with any of these funds. We could with the federalized money, and really, you can use it for any economic development purpose, the defederalized money. So at some point in the future, if the Region Twelve Board decided revolving loan funds is not where we want to have those monies, we want to do something else they could. Because they are defederalized, as long as you follow Davis Bacon. That's the only provision that Congress put in.
Basically takes away the strings that are attached.
Which also means when it's defederalized, that we could make Carroll and Crawford County eligible. Because if they wanted to, the Region Twelve Board could say, Ida County's not eligible for our fund. Or Kipsey New York is eligible for the fund, because it's defederalized, so.
But Davis Bacon would still always apply.
Davis Bacon always applies. Because that's the only thing they put on it. So we don't do construction. Though we do do projects that involve construction, and we do that now, but we will fund equipment. We might fund land purchase, we might fund a building purchase, uh, we might fund working capital so that they can buy supplies or pay people. We will not fund building construction. With EDA money.
Right.
We'll do it with USDA money, uh, but under certain circumstances, but not the EDA. So, so like an industrial park or something like that, if something was gonna be created? Yes, yes, like, we can't, we couldn't do a spec building with federal money. We could do it with the federalized. And we wouldn't want to build a building with federal money, but.
Plus two builder.
But if we had companies that were going to build a building, but they needed money from us, and this has happened with a lot of our projects. We've got three million dollars worth of equipment, like a half a million dollar loan, and you were to low interest rates by equipment. And so that's what will get proposed to the board, and that, that's in the long term, so if it gets approved. So the second reason is it will defederalize eventually, and at that time, if Crawford wasn't eligible. We could, will amend them in at that time. That's up to the board, but, you know, you have a seat, one of six on the board. Um, the, the, the third reason is the money's available now. The four to one match is. That only happens with the disaster nofo, and it's happened for us in ninety five, and two thousand eight, and two thousand twenty. And now, four times in the last thirty years, we've been eligible for those funds. Uh, the fourth reason, I think it would be a good idea, is you've got the match in place. It's already spent. Of course, if you don't do it, or if they don't let me apply, because we could still apply for one point two million. They can, may come back and say, we'll fund it, but we'll only fund it at eight hundred thousand. So we may have to cut back on what we ask for, which means we could cut back on the match. As I told you when I asked you to program, if that happens, we would return whatever we don't use back to the counties. But having the money in place now is not, is, at least there's opportunity to go out after the funds. Um, fifth, you own it anyway, even though I, not that this has ever been pressed legally. But we are a twenty eighty agreement that you're part of, so even if a grant comes in that benefits the other four counties. You would own one sixth of that because you're part of that twenty eighty agreement. So you still own it. You would still own your match, you would still own any of the grant that comes in. Um, and, and that has, we've enjoyed a lot of camaraderie, I think, on the board. You know, I know Dave is relatively new on our board, but I think that it worked very well together collaboratively between the six counties. Kind of a one for all thing. I know that, that if you have businesses that need assistance. We have a seven point two million dollar capital base. We're gonna be able to help businesses here anyway with whatever they would need from the other existing funds that we have. So it's, it's not like your businesses would be missing out. And every other RLF we have, you know, all the counties jointly own. And as you can see, you've put in relatively about the same amount of match. It's just that weird amount from those first. I was not director when that happened, by the way, like six months after that, uh, the deal was made. But, uh, it's, you know, it's not too much, but it was seven thousand between, uh, the highest and lowest investment thirty years ago.
Something really. Let me cough, does it any more?
We're still in.
We're still in.
You're still in.
We just won't get it.
It's, it's on one side, you've got the match that your money is gonna go into a fund that your businesses aren't eligible for. And that's on face, but hopefully, we'll get, I mean, we'll get you eligible when you defederalize, even if you don't have disaster declaration. And, and you own the fund anyway, even if the other four counties give you grant, you own it because you own Region Twelve.
Well, I think, Rick, if you look at the numbers showing, the last thirty years, Region Twelve have been very fair throughout the region.
Absolutely.
And it has, isn't it like our mental health region, everything goes to, so you see, but we, we work together well. And eventually, even though temporarily we, we're not in this, then money will be back to us.
You're in the other funds, and, you know, you've benefited at least well, and we fund projects where they happen, you know, so we don't. If, if, we have to have a business owner that can use the fund, and that it, that applies, and that everything works for them to be a part of it. Uh, and we've done things from repair shops, you know, single, two-person businesses, main street businesses. Up with some of your bigger industries in the county, and that's true in every county.
And even talking with the other six, or like even Rick Thompson stopped by the house last night, he talked about the sloven, he said his shoes on the other foot, and it was our county. We move forward as well. We, you know, we, we leave our match in there because we know that we are reaching it.
But it's a revolving fund, so I mean, it's indefinite, or?
It's indefinite.
So eventually, when it defederalizes or we become a disaster.
Yes.
So we're investing on our future.
Very fortunate to have been part of this group. And we have friends in Manona County that just meet their head against the wall, because there's like, lack, no lack, or no defined. Go to Rick type guy to get help building, but send your one person and send it another person, and you end up back in youth, and you don't have any answers.
Good point, like, um.
But I mean, this has been a great asset to the county, and I.
Well, I think if you look money wise, it shows that Crawford's been very active in it. In your program.
It'll go up and down, and there were some counties at one point, we had, I think it was SAC, had more loans than any other county. This was several years ago, but their total was really low, but we had done a lot of main street businesses, there were really a lot of small loans. That it's mom and pops, though, is where America's built on.
As I looked through this.
I think we just allow Rick and his, uh, staff and the directors to make this decision, and I, I'm in on it.
I'm in.
I think you got consensus.
Okay, and I'll talk to Carol on Monday. I don't know, I've talked a little bit with Stephanie Hausman. You know, obviously, she's only one of five, and just talked with her a bit, so I, I want everybody. But I wanted to come and talk to you, because I want you to know what I was gonna do, and I want you to be comfortable with it. Uh, I think, I think it's a way for us to leverage some additional federal dollars, which down the road, we've always opted to keep it in the RLF. Because of the demand, but the board couldn't determine that they would like to use it for another use, as long as it's a common development. Including, we could always use it for MASP or something else, another day, but. Always trying to build up resources for our region, so.
Good way to keep leveraging for the future. Keep those funds coming in.
I'm kind of in favor of that. I kind of, I am in favor of that.
If you get any questions about this or anything, always please give us a call.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
See you the seventh.
Jake, you're, uh, up next on our agenda. Thanks for being patient. We got a long list, a very short list with a lot to do this morning.
Oh, I just kind of wanted to bring up, I've been tasked with, uh, looking at outfitting city center with a generator. Um, I brought in, uh, the guy that I was talking with, uh, Friday, of, uh, from Baldwin Electric. Um, the Luke, I apologize, I didn't get your last name. That makes sense. So, but, um, talking with him, um, I think the, that, that west side of the parking lot's gonna look like an opportunity. Space to put that, look, if you put that generator, um.
Down in the bottom there?
Yeah, down in that little parking spot that's on the south side of the building, but it's. Yeah, where the, yeah, and there's potential for, depending on our size of generator, um, that we go with, um, you. We think it might be small enough to put into that small cabinet. Okay. One of the big things, um, before I get into the numbers of the behind it, just kind of, I wanted to address the fact that. You gotta, we're gonna put a automatic transfer switch in, and I know that there was movement on that concrete that we've been talking about. Supposed right now. Um, I, I have a recommendation, I'd like to get Luke in on that as far as just not. Please putting in a transfer switch, okay, not, nothing like that, okay, but to tap into that conduit and put. A case for that transfer switch sitting up against that retaining wall, okay, shouldn't, shouldn't cost much to, to accomplish. Uh, a couple of brands, I think, was, we were looking at the most. So, but basically, this way you got a spot for that transfer switch, you don't have to break up the concrete that's in place already, or that will be putting in place.
When we had it moved forward.
Yep, and this way we can, um, it, it just sets us up really well in that capacity. Now, um, where, where we place it, that's kind of up, uh, kind of subjective, but, um, because it, I mean, granted, I, ideally, I would like to have it in that cabinet. That little green cabinet that sits down there. Um, I can't make any guarantees, because we don't know exactly specifically how big that generator's gonna be. And when I say specifically, I mean.
Size are you looking at?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm about to say, but when I say specifically, I'm talking not necessarily kilowatts, but I'm talking just feet and inches. Okay, so, um, but as far as what we're looking at, as regarding the size, you know, we were looking at approximately seventy five kilowatts. Uh, for the building. Yep.
Why do we need that?
For what? So, for the building, to run the building itself, okay? DMU, um, we, we just, I had them pull, I pulled their numbers, and they said they haven't gone over fifty kilowatts for that building. Over time. Now, we're adding much more electrical equipment in there. It's the reason why we want to oversize a little bit versus undersize. Because if you undersize that, then you're gonna destroy your generator in the process. So, and then you're back to square one. Does that make sense?
No.
No? So if you run that generator.
That building was pulling fifty?
The most, the most it's pulled is fifty. Okay, now, to, just to kind of put everybody at ease, before I get into why you want to oversize your generator just a little bit. The jail is running at seven, sixty five kilowatts. The fire hall runs sixty five kilowatts. City Hall went for a hundred and seventy five kilowatts, okay? And the courthouse is rated for very, very rough estimate of three hundred, okay? So, in comparison, I don't think I'm asking too much. Um, I, we feel, as, as I've kind of gauged around and talked to people. A hundred and seventy five kilowatts for city, city hall was a bit much, possibly, but. I, I'm speculating on that. I don't know the whole ins and outs of why they went that route, but.
Do we want to run everything that's there with the generator if there's an emergency? Do we want to run everything that's there with the generator? If there's an emergency, I thought we were just wanting to run the refrigerator in your room.
What I always thought.
So, okay, here's a problem with that. You're not saving costs by just segregating stuff out.
Are we saving costs by getting a smaller generator?
Well, and that's what I'm alluding to here in this scenario. Okay, so let's say you decide to get a smaller generator to run my equipment and those freezers. Okay, let's say we, you've got to run different lines with it. You've got to run a new panel for it. And then you got to tie it into the generator and everything associated with that, along with the automatic transfers which that goes with it. So when you really put it to brass tacks, you're really not saving money in that capacity. You're just making more work for yourself. Does that make sense? Cause you got to run those lines and you got to put another panel for to to run it.
What a hospital had red flag in the white flag because one ones are back at my generator, ones aren't.
Right.
So.
Have you, what's the cost difference? Have you been in contact with public health in the board and what? Because we gave them the dollar and I said, figure it out.
Okay, well, and I'm just up here just.
Why are we talking about this? It should be coinciding with the design plans of what they're deciding.
Well, I thought it was prudent to get to notify the board in regards to what a possible recommendation would be.
What's the recommendation?
It's this, so seventy-five uh, kilowatt for the generator. Um, and then obviously have an automatic transfer switch that goes with it and all the 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 trimmings with that. Okay, and it's designed to support that building. Okay. Um, the cost behind that, we estimated to be about ninety thousand, I think it was.
What do you, are you doing diesel?
Yes.
The diesel one is.
I would want to make it more expensive than a natural gas.
I just got one boat back the other day. I haven't got Cummins. This is for Generac.
Okay, and see, that's the other thing is Cummins, which is the high-end model when you talk about companies. Okay, but I understand that the jail, the courthouse are both Cummins and they're, they've got their service contract associated with that. So to deviate that, now you got another set of, and you know, another animal as far as service contract is concerned. So otherwise I was like, well, why would we go on with Cummins? Why not go with something like Generac?
Yep, that's what was recommended to me.
Um, but then you've got a different, but then you got a different service contract that you got to deal with on top of that. That's the only, and I'm telling, I'm.
We're listening.
So I'm not making a recommendation as far as Cummins versus Generac or any of those capacities. I'm just saying um, one shop, a one shop, top, uh, one-stop shop is nice. But if it's really prudent to have a second service contract.
Depends on the cost.
Exactly.
Exactly. Yeah, so find out what it is.
Don't want to invent the wheel, but then again.
Exactly. So are we needing a generator over there more so for your medications and vaccinations and things like that, or we need to know more for so your equipment? Um, I say both are viable. Okay.
It's completely different than what I visualized again.
Sure.
Because I always thought it was just an emergency. The only, so the question that one of our board members had is, uh, what's there now? And why can't we just put that all over and why are we making it so complex? That was a question from my board right now.
Well, I mean, this is where I'm asking a challenge in regarding, that's a twenty-four, three sixty-five building and services that you're providing, and do you really want to go with pop without power for a period of time when you're offering that type of service?
Kim, what do you think? So they got two ones. The obviously the back is a priority, the exact purchase of freezers, that that is not in question at any issue. I don't know, you know, as far as the idea and the things, what we need to have to to keep things running on that end. I know our alarm system works on the internet and power and phone. And that was what the original discussion started is we had that outage that knocked everything out for us and we weren't getting the alerts from the the backup systems like we were supposed to. So that was the original uh, motivation for the discussion. Um, currently we don't have any. Only we don't have the generator. We don't have or have anything. Uh, so we we definitely need something. Um, I don't know what the county's continuity operations plan is. I don't know where we fit into that. I don't know what the plan is for the county. If there is a a power outage that that knocks us out for, you know, a number of days or, you know, I I don't know what that looks like. I haven't seen it. Uh, that's probably something that needs to be talked about.
Yep.
Uh, and as far as what we need. Obviously we have uh, electronic health records that you have to have access to to provide our our services for our clients. Uh, all of our systems are electronic now, uh, we're we're capable of. So in order to to be able to access those medical records for our clients, we obviously need the internet and, you know, some power to the computers. Does that mean we need to have every light in the building on? I I don't know.
Well, and that's not really a sign that we're having that that we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, you don't have to have every light as far as the load is concerned, and that's why we've outfitted this generator the way we have. It's it's not all the lights on being at once. That's gonna, that's really affecting this generator. It's getting started.
Right. I think I think it's the the kick on piece of it to for whatever, whatever the load is, it's that kick on point that that where it's the most critical that you have the rights. And and that that that's the extent of my knowledge and understanding right there is is the kick on and and then.
Well, the transfer switch, you you're, that's on the automatic transfer switch. Is that what you're talking about kicking it on?
Well, so, okay, well, I mean, when you have that switch over, the the mo- the most load that you're going to be putting on that generator is when it first kicks on. Okay, it's it's not afterwards. Okay, because by that point it's running already and it's maintaining. It's like any component, any electronic component, the worst portion, the most where it requires the most load and the most that's hardest on that thing is when you first kick it on. Okay. After, once you get it going, you don't really have any troubles. I mean, that goes with cars, that goes with, you know, your cell phones, it goes with computers, it goes with, you know, so many devices that you have out there that it's when that initial turn-on process comes into play, is when you have your most load and most I guess friction or most most difficulty getting going. And that's where that load starts coming into play. Okay. Cause it's got a got a kick on and then it's got to take on whatever was going on at that point. Yeah. So.
Isn't the city itself, Liam, you have their own backup generators or?
The city is just putting a new system in that they've been uh, in their master plan.
That could potentially cover.
It's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's only city hall building.
And that's been in their master plan. I talked to the mayor to figure out what their plan was and it's kind of there. But we have in in the short span of a two-block, uh, jail has one. The courthouse has one, the fire station has one, city hall has one. And if you follow where I'm going, we're all in the same exact path. Nobody's even a block off. Uh, and then we would have one just for public health. So seems like this little area right in here is pretty well covered with, and then the hospital has, uh, probably, and that's where we use the public health use theirs. The question that I had, Kim, like when you guys are out in the field with your patients, your your computers have their own uh, ba- backup internet, is that correct?
We don't have internet.
They don't have internet?
You, I mean.
Like our, our tablets that we have for our company, we pay for internet for each one of them.
I don't.
No, when they're out in the field, they do not, I mean, if they're using internet, it's not provided by the county.
Okay, all right.
I mean, the laptops, obviously you're you're correct, but it has its own battery. Okay, it's running.
Right, right battery, yes, that one. But.
But there's no.
Ours have their own.
Access to the internet as well.
No, and that was, I mean, that was something that we were discussing back with COVID as far as that type of access and the things along those lines. So.
So when they're getting their records, they're they're getting them all at the office. And so when they actually are leading to what's your patients wants.
Seven, twelve hundred dollars per year. So.
So so Jake, if a seventy-five K generator costs ninety thousand, how much does a seventy K, sixty K, or fifty K? What do they cost?
I think that's a pretty high. That was the number I jumped at the day, but I got actual numbers back yesterday. Uh, and eighty KW which is three hundred amps. Is about forty-five thousand for an annual gas.
Forty-five?
Yeah, and then an A T S is between ten and thirteen thousand.
You say A T S?
Automatic transfer.
Okay, alright, okay.
Ten to fifteen.
Regardless, he got a seventy.
Yeah.
Eighty. Yeah, you're you're under sixty thousand with the A T S in it.
You tell them here and say, you're getting a lot more.
I'm enjoying the party.
I'll come on up.
I'm on up.
For the natural gas eighty KW generator, which will be three hundred amps, they're about fifty, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, somewhere in there, roughly that's pretty rough.
And I bet that run that whole bill is pretty easy. There may be a.
That's an eighty K for three hundred amps.
So the first one you said was a diesel then?
A diesel, you're another five or six thousand dollars.
So what was the forty-five thousand dollar one?
Forty-five thousand dollars. That was just. So that.
But it's an LP generator? Or a natural gas generator?
Yeah, so a natural gas generator eighty K, you're about forty-three, forty-four thousand.
Keep in mind that if we do decide to do natural gas, I have not explored the um, the feeds to that as far as the towns or that that building is concerned.
I would put a major on it and I'd value it and use them.
Right, and we got to meet with all that and we need to make sure that, you know, there's enough pressure in there to support that jet generator. I know in the past, when the last time we had, I think it was that big cold spell, they almost turned off the gas to the town because they couldn't support it. But that that was a pretty extreme cold spell too.
I've never heard of a gas company turning off the gas to the town in the cold.
I've heard of diesel gelling because it's too cold.
Right.
That was of my. I'm not crazy about the diesel I had.
Nobody I talked to, diesel gets old, diesel, you know.
And it was, it had to do with what your, the the pressure behind the gas itself. They couldn't admit to the amount of pressure needed.
So you you mentioned the cost of an eighty K. How much is a fifty K? You know?
Okay.
I just curious, I guess, because if you said fifty is the most that that building's ever used, it'd be nice to know, I guess, on an average over a year or two-year, what's the average use of that building instead of the most that it ever did? I guess I'd like to know the average. If the average is thirty, then maybe a fifty-one would be fine.
But it's, it doesn't even make any sense. You'd want to know that because we're really concerned about keeping his.
I know it's different. We're going to use it different than what it was being used in the past, but.
Right.
I love the surprise this this morning, just for my own information, and I think it was a Generac, a fifty kilowatt was around twenty thousand.
See, we looked at the Generac too. Those are the numbers. I talked to propane Hank, kind of gave me some information as well.
Yep.
I got propane Hank's number. Why not call him, pick on his? So, yeah, everybody feels like we're not lighting the building up and I used it with with Jake like a Christmas tree. It's not going to be up and running. We're using it as an emergency backup for the vital services of our computers. And the rest of it, you know, if it's an emergency, you're also.
If we had a prolonged period of no electricity, I mean, that would be because of some sort of a disaster that I would doubt we would have employees being able to even get to work and have it open to service anybody. We just need it to keep Jake's room running and the things that were storing there to use for patients, keep them cool, and that's it.
That was my vision.
Has anybody thought of uh, a used generator? They bought one for the fire station in Charter Road fifteen years ago.
I mean, how.
Meese Electric in North Liberty, so some that's come out of a phone building that they decommissioned and had like thirty hours on it.
Wow, for that emergency.
And that was a seventy-five KW and I think we gave at that time eighteen thousand.
That's pretty low. If you could find some reliable.
We're always trying to get out of the box because of, uh, you know, we spent ninety thousand dollars on the generator alone. The money that.
I don't think that ninety thousand was on the generator alone. I think that was the generator plus the the shipping, the installation, all the pieces and parts.
But it's the, to get the generator up and running, make it a bigger sense.
One thing to keep in mind, and I think you can correct me on this one as well. It's fifty-two weeks to get a generator.
That's what they're telling us when we go.
Yeah, we've heard that before and they're all quick now.
Yeah, they're all.
These ones I looked at, I think it's, I got a photo, it was like thirty weeks.
Thirty weeks? I see how you are. You're starting to cut me everywhere now, aren't you?
I mean, just to get updated information.
But that big one with city hall, that was, that's fifty-four weeks.
Gotcha, that big one.
That's your Cummins. This is the Generac.
Yeah.
I haven't heard back from Cummins yet. He said he backed in a little week.
I mean, Gina, you make a good point, I guess, about the location of all of those generators.
You've pointed out to me more than once.
All purchased by taxpayer dollars.
Right in a row.
Think as a should have got. You would hope that your government bodies would be able to work together better, so not everybody's buying one. Can't they, can we share? Can we run other?
Can you run a line to city hall over there? Tie. Action cord.
They like us.
Sometimes.
We should have had some government entities working together prior to this and bought a Great Banquet. It would have fired up a lot more.
Get the old tractor.
And here we are. And and the the reason we have to get this hammered out is so that we can start getting, because just like you said, now we're going, because it's been suggested just to put the conduit under the uh, concrete and not even wait, just get it done, put put conduit under there and if he needs it, he needs it. If he doesn't, he doesn't. So we're moving on.
Well.
But it'd be nice to.
Dave brought a point. We gave the public health board get it done. I mean, kind of know where our stance is here, but I mean, like you say, that's what they want. I mean.
This is what we need. This is what we get best by. Just to then come back to us.
I do know, I mean, I I think they they get the idea that we're wanting frugality. But uh, I also know they're they're, they know what they need.
Correct. And that's the reason that we turned it over to them.
I'm definitely got stuck at ninety thousand.
I thought ninety-five, but I mean, we just already, we only went down ten, ten KWs and and you almost cut the price in half. You know?
Almost, yeah, forty-five and ninety.
I mean, if that, if that surge thing is our concern.
Well, it's not, it it's not necessarily like.
Automatically, when you switch over, your demand's going to be the greatest.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Or two or whatever, everything.
And then back on. Yeah.
So you'll have a flash of you'll bump up against that fifty or sixty KW and then it'll shut right back down.
And that and that's what I'm alluding to. That's my point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, there is certain things that you can hook into the A T Ss. I don't know what kind of air handling system's down there, but you can set them up that those stuff with the air handling units off or only turn them on if if they're not drawn. You know, it monitors how much power's going through, but if it says I can turn it on, it'll turn it on or it'll shut it off, or if it's starting to get to a plane or a stand trip, it'll shut stuff down. Air handling, you know, I didn't use blowhole wiring.
Well, I would like to throw one more thing in there, one to think about. I mean, if you think about where we've had our longest spells, where we've had power outs usually because of winter storms. You know, where we've had a week or, and we don't usually typically see what they do down south or they're not prepared for snow at all, but but you know, he's talking about air handle, but I mean, making sure we keep heat in that building in particular, so our pipes don't freeze and we don't have another catastrophe.
Which I assume it's all is it all forced air, natural gas?
Yes, is it all forced air?
So that's good. We must have a draw then if it was all electric.
Yeah. Exactly. So there, I mean, I I just wanted to throw that in because I, why you was talking about forced air, I thought, oh, there's something, but gotta have heat. So and I think that building, I think it does run off of gas as far as like furnaces. Well, the only other thing that I will mention, and I'm just throwing this one out there, is that do you want to throw your eggs all in one basket by going with natural gas because that furnace is run by gas as well?
Long we had gas.
Yeah, I mean.
So I, I.
We've got to go, this has got it. We've we've put it over the public health board and come up with a design plan with that and figure out what you need and don't spend too much money. I mean, we're going to see and talk for an hour. I sometimes got to go back to them anyways.
Okay.
Yep, and they're out of money, they ought to be moving in. And, they're out of money, they oughta be moving in.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
So these specifics that we're talking, that I'm mentioning, need to be pointed at the board panel.
Exactly.
To each other, board.
Appreciate your efforts.
Perfect. Yeah, we don't get any questions?
Yeah. Okay. Anyone or the other? I, I don't have anything else, I just, just presenting everything to you guys to, you know.
Under the concrete, and I had an arc, just, it'll be there, we need that way.
Point, keep the chain, or keep the leather drawn on the point coin person.
When he was there, he's, when Luke was over there, he's like, oh, I could do this easily.
Always out one or two coins. Okay, let's move on, cause we've got a meeting to get to that I'm, I'm paying a lawyer bill here.
Thank you, Jake, appreciate all you're doing.
Citizens input. Let's chase a bunch of them out. Mr. Mulbauer, do you have anything for citizens input? He's never been called that before. Yeah, we were talking to you. Do you have anything for citizens input? You were here. Mr. Munt. Okay, sir, thank you very much, is there anybody in the Zoom land that has any citizens input? No input, thank you. So, this isn't necessary, how does this operate, this?
It is similar to a closed session, it is exempt from open session.
So I would ask for a motion to enter exempt session, is that how I would do this?
I don't think so, that's probably a great idea.
I have a motion for Ms. Hayden and a second, Mr. Mulbauer to enter exempt session to discuss the, uh, Teamsters Local Union Agreements. How's that? At least local union five-five-four, the agreements.
All in favor?
All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, check both sides, motion carries, thank you for attending, everyone.
Chastity, go sit outside for a moment.